Good evening, Mr. Allen.
Good evening.
All right, let me see.
Thank you, sir.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, April 26, 2023. If we could have a roll call, please, Chrissy.
Commissioner Lemey?
Will not be here this evening.
Vice Chair Prickett?
I'm here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Chair Stephenson?
Here.
Here.
Who?
All right. And with this time, we will have Pledge Allegiance, and Commissioner Andrews will be leading us this evening.
All right, who stands? All allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation,
with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
All right. Is there anyone who would wish to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? We're all here for an agenda item, okay. Great.
Is the Pineberry School with agenda item?
Yes, it is.
Then, yes.
All right. And so we will go right into the Pineberry School. How's that sound? All right. The matter before the Planning Commission this evening is case file LU-0007-2023, Pineberry School. This is a conditional use type III quasi-judicial public hearing. And before we go through the hearing procedure, I'd like to explain a little bit about the Planning Commission and the procedure that we'll be following for tonight's public hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Troutdale citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Troutdale residents who've been appointed by the city council. They serve four-year terms. They are strictly volunteers and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision. For other applications, they are simply making a recommendation to the city council who renders the final decision. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Troutdale Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff present their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the comprehensive plan, development code, or other city land use regulations apply, must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during this public hearing may be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may validate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to admit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. As a final note, these hearings are being recorded and televised. So if you wish to speak to the item, please come forward to the table, state your name and address for the record. And before we open the public hearing this evening, is there any commissioners that have any conflict of interest, ex parte communication, or bias to declare? No? 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 And Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Nope.
All right. So with that, we will open the public hearing this evening for case file LU-0007-2023, Pineberry School.
We ready to rock and roll here, Chair?
Take it away.
Okay.
Oh, uh, let's see. I'm looking for the shade. Did you get outside at all today? You gonna come over to my yard again?
In a while.
I can do it from there, Chrissy.
Chair. I put the shades down. Randy was having a heck of a time last night with the sun.
Yeah.
Chair, I can do the presentation without the PowerPoint. There's no, all the...
We having a little issue there.
We're having a little issue, and there's no real images on the PowerPoint with the exception of one, so...
Okay. Well, I think you're making progress so now.
Okay, now she's got it.
There you go.
Rock and roll. Okay, so, good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm David Bernicker, the Community Development Director. We're here to discuss the Pineberry School conditional use permit LU-007-2023. And as I mentioned, this is for conditional use. Next slide, please. So the project is located in the Glen... Whoops, back, please.
My apologies.
In the Glen Otto Park area, near the Sam Cox Building. Location is 1102 East Historic Columbia River Highway. Next, please. So what is being requested tonight is a conditional use for an outdoor preschool to be able to use the Sam Cox Building at Glen Otto Park for some internal or some interior uses. And as the proposal is, again, seeking conditional use for preschool to use the Sam Cox Building. The preschool has been operating at the park outdoors for the past two years. However, this evening, they're requesting to be able to use the Sam Cox Building for the school. The preschool, the existing preschool, is an existing community service use within the code and subsequently goes through the conditional use process. Next slide, please. The criteria we'll be looking at tonight is through the development code. We'll be looking at Chapter 1, the provisions; Chapter 2, procedures for decision-making; Chapter 3.5, dealing with open spaces; Section 6.3, dealing with conditional uses; Chapter 9, off-street parking; Chapter 11, landscape and screening; and finally, Chapter 17, which is basic general provisions. Next slide, please. So as Chair mentioned, this is a type III public hearing. Planning Commission is a decision-making body. We're here as part of a type III quasi-judicial review. The procedures requires, this procedure requires a public hearing and Planning Commission review in order to be adopted. Planning Commission is a decision-making body for this application and may approve or approve with conditions or deny this application. Nearby property owners, relevant review entities, and other stakeholders have been notified accordingly. So next slide, please. Didn't receive a whole lot of comments on this project. Just two minor comments from City of Troutdale Public Works and from Monoma County Transportation Division. Next slide, please. So in review of this conditional use, there is six criteria. Next slide, please. Next slide, if you would, Chrissy.
Nine?
Yeah, Brett, that's good.
Okay.
That, the first one is, is the use listed, conditional use in the underlying district? And/or approved by Planning Commission as similar to conditional use listed in the underlying district. The subject property is zoned open space, community service. The preschool is included within the definitions of community service per the development code. Consequently, the criterion is met. Next one, please. The next one deals with the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use. The finding is that the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use. The Glen Otto Park, as well as the Sam Cox Building, already hold numerous community events as well as city staff events. Therefore, the use of the site would be suitable for preschool. The natural elements of what the support, the mission of what the school is trying to do, which is bringing outdoor education in the forest to young people, to little people. So, next. Criteria C: All transportation, the all-transportation system, public facilities, and public services related to the proposed development have or can be improved to have adequate capacity to serve the proposed development at the time of completion. The finding, all transportation systems do meet this. The Sam Cox Building is located within the Glen Otto Park, has an existing parking lot at the front of the property and adjacent to the historic River Highway. The applicant stated that the program has been occurring outdoor at the park for the past two years and has not caused any significant impact on the public transportation or public facilities. The Monoma County Transportation Division has reviewed this application and provided an extra condition, which I can go into more detail, Chair. Consequently, or such, the criterion is met. Next one, please. Next one focuses, asks the question is, would the proposed use will provide adequate open space landscaping and aesthetic design to the area? The finding is that the proposed use will provide adequate open space and landscaping to the area, to the area, excuse me, and mitigate any possible adverse effects. Really, nothing is changing at the site. The applicant is just asking for this kind of interior use to supplement the exterior use that they're currently doing for the children. Such, the criterion is met. Next one, please. The proposed use as condition will not cause or result in the creation of a public nuisance. Probably might go without saying, but a preschool traditionally does not cause any public nuisance. It is relatively low impact on the site. And with under 30 students, 12 currently enrolled, any type of impact will be minor, and staff feels that the criterion is such as is met. Next one, please. The proposal satisfies the applicable provisions of this code, which it does. The proposal meets all the code criteria. Consequently, the criterion is met. And next slide. So consequently, staff recommends approval of LU-007-2023. And that's my report this evening, and thank you, and it's short and sweet.
Okay. Questions for staff at this time? Michelle?
How's this different than other groups that use the parking rent through facility?
How's it different?
Different, yeah. I'm not sure how to answer that, Commissioner. I'm not familiar with, frankly, all the other groups that use it. These folks have been using it primarily as a, I'm repeating what I've already said in the presentation, but they've, they've been using it as, so at Sam Cox, in the Sam Cox Building, there's a wide range of activities that happen there. I think there's some art events and community service events. We, the city, use it for our, for our parks and recreation meetings and things of that nature. To me, this is just one of many uses that are out there, and it's very benign in nature, again, given that it's kids, and history shows that they've had little or no impact in the area.
Would they be renting the facility like other groups, or...?
That is a great question, and I appreciate you bringing that up. So what we're doing here, sorry if I didn't fully understand the question. What we're doing here tonight is approving the conditional use. If Planning Commission votes for approval in that conditional use, then that'll be the next piece of what happens, is to figure out the agreement between the city and the applicant. So right now, we're not getting into the detail of what that agreement is. We're just asking the question about is, does the, is the use okay for the site?
I didn't see anything about hours or if it's year-round or not.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And what would that affect beyond our parks programs?
So all of these things that you're mentioning, and I'm looking for my notes here, because this was kind of some of the issues we had today, is that... So any terms, this came from the Public Works Director, and Tanny, can you pass this out? Because this is something that, in hindsight, Commissioner might have, should have been in your packet
Okay.
as well as the affidavit. And if you go down to that first paragraph, it reads, "Any terms of a rental or usage of the facility are a separate matter and will be subject to a separate agreement with the city as a facility owner and the school as a facility user renter." So all the things that you're mentioning in terms of hours per day, how long they're going to be there, although it is described in the staff report that this is a two-year contract with this group, but any other things that need to be fleshed out would be done with approval of the conditional use. Those types of questions, although make a lot of sense to me, the purview within Planning Commission is really the land use side of it, and asking the question or satisfying the question of, does this particular use, does it work conditionally on the site? But you have, you have the email from the Public Works Director, and I guess in hindsight, it probably should have been in your packet.
I came here straight from work.
Okay.
And the reason I did both of those is I received those from staff. So I just gave you guys everything that I had.
And what I'm realizing, my packet may not have had it, so it's in, it's in your packet, but the affidavit, I don't think, was in your packet.
Correct.
So, thank you. So I apologize for that.
Is the rental agreement, is that decided on by the city itself, or is there...
So the city, the city is kind of wearing two hats in this particular application. So, you know, in some respects, the city is acting as the property landlord. In this case, it'll be Public Works and Travis and his team. And then, in this particular, this evening, land use regulator is community development. So it's, so the city is trying to, not trying, the city's separating out those two functions between the ownership and what it means from the ownership perspective in the agreement versus what the actual land use, meeting the land use criteria.
Is this something that would be set out all the time, or is it cleanup at the end of the day, or...?
Again, all those things would be negotiated between the city, assuming you approve with the conditional use permit of the use being there.
So really, what we're doing is we're granting the conditional use to the city, who's the property owner, with it being a land use decision. And then, the city would activate the use, and then they would basically bring in the preschool as a tenant.
That's, said more clearly than I said it, but thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. At least, that's how I understand it.
That's correct.
Oh, let's let somebody else speak.
Okay. Any other questions? Michelle Prickett?
Monoma County wants, according to this, Monoma County wants a exiting park, something about traffic congestion and exiting in because there's an extra few students.
I think that's contingent upon, under, Commissioner, I think that's contingent upon if there's an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not starting off of that. I mean, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the preschool now has 12 students, and I think they're thinking of going up, but the county's just thinking ahead.
So if it doesn't increase traffic, then they have to come back with something.
That is exactly right.
Thank you.
I could see that being a challenge in the summer.
Yep.
But that would be probably the only time. Commissioner Andrews?
That pretty much covers, I think, the basics as far as the conditional use kind of details. Yeah, I mean, I've seen schools do that kind of thing where they do like a pickup-drop-off sort of thing to ease it. So I'm sure we'll figure it out if we need to, but everything else is pretty straightforward. No further questions for me.
Commissioner Wilcox?
The only issue I had isn't really with the applicant, but the fact that the city is quite, the city has a building the size of the Sam Cox Building is classified open space. That kind of confused me. Was, does Sugar Pine fall under that same classification?
I don't think so, because I don't think that's technically a park property. I believe the property upfront is commercial, right? The parking lot at Sugar Pine, I think, is commercial property.
I don't know where, how much is commercial and how much is city-owned to be, to be honest, Chair.
Good question.
Okay, exactly. I noticed Sugar Pine had a huge impact on that parking lot. Okay, that's all I had, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
It was my understanding, Chair, that the parking is park, parking, but they've given spots or arranged a deal with Sugar Pine in order to have some of those set aside? But I believe that is park parking.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's park parking. I'm just wondering, I thought that property, where the parking lot is, is commercial, and the other stuff is park open space.
Well, that'd have to be, wouldn't it? Because Sugar Pine is a commercial building, so it wouldn't be on open space.
Yeah, we would hope.
Yes.
All right. At this time, we'd like the applicant to come forward, please. Good evening.
Hi. Thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Samantha Dorsh, and my address is 1450 Northeast 17th Street, Gresham, Oregon. Thank you so much for seeing my application. Our application now, we initially were a private preschool and now we're a nonprofit. So I don't own it anymore. It is director governed, so... Was that confusing?
Yeah, did you have any information you wanted to provide? Or is it all been covered?
Yeah, it's all in there. I just am getting used to not being the owner anymore. That's new, it's a new switch, so, sorry. I wanted to show you a video from school to show you kind of what we're doing, if that's appropriate.
It's fine, yeah.
Okay. Can I just kind of put it up by the camera and it could be on the screen there?
Sure.
Okay.
Does it all work? Uh-oh.
Oh, that's an idea.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
All right, let's see. Oh, okay, I was on the Facebook.
So is it Under the Trees or Pine Hill?
Yeah, Under the Trees was the name when it was a private company.
And now that it's a nonprofit, it's Pineberry.
It's Pineberry. In Oregon, there's not a way to transition. You have to close a business and open a nonprofit, so it's a separate entity.
Now they get more money that way, they get to charge.
Let's see. I am not finding it.
Do you guys meet all year round, outside?
We meet, yeah, I'll set that aside for now. We meet just during the school year. So we're in the park and the building during a time of the day and the year when it is not heavily used. Most days, we're the only ones in the park. Occasionally, there are a few people walking through, but most of the time, it's just us there, especially in the cold winter months. A bunch of kids bundled up and teachers bundled up, just hanging out in the park together. Outdoor school is really what we want to do. The reason we're seeking this conditional use to use the space is in Oregon, to be licensed for a longer day of preschool. We have to have an indoor space for nap time and meals. And we have to be a full-day program to be able to join preschool for all, which is our ultimate goal. We want to be able to provide, be one of the providers for the state or the county for low-income kids, students of color, disabled kids, kids of veterans, and eventually, all preschoolers hopefully will be able to access free preschool. So that's our whole purpose. That's what we're working for here.
Okay. That's great. All right. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Andrews?
I think so.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Commissioner Wilcox?
No, nothing additional.
Okay. And you're looking at going to, up to 25 students, right?
Yeah, so right now, our maximum is 15. The preschool for all program requires that we would have 10 spaces available for those students, so that would be an additional 10, is the hope.
Take it to 25.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I think that's all. So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, anyone wishing to testify as a proponent to the application? Okay. Sure. One forward.
My name's Cassie Rogers. Do I need to give my address? Okay. It's 16000 Southeast Powell Boulevard, Space 48, Portland. I'm the Director of Marketing for Primary School, and I wanted to also mention something that I think a lot of people don't know a lot about us, is that one of the things that's really important to us is that we give back to the community that's given back so much to us. So as the Director of Marketing and the Executive Director, one of the other things that we really like to do is try and touch the community in other ways. So we've held a lot of events at Glen Otto as well that we have taken the funds that we've received from those events and then given back to local programs as well. So that's something that's also really important to us, is just making sure that we're giving back to the community as well, along with giving outdoor quality education to kiddos. So I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to testify as a proponent to the application? All right. Anyone wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? Any neutral parties wishing to testify this evening? All right. Somebody entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair? I move that way to close the public hearing?
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Okay. So. So I guess.
I was trying to look, actually look up the zoning for the parking, so I'm not getting there. But I think it is commercial.
Where is it?
It's right where the brown, just as you cross the river there, there's the bridge. It's pink.
Yeah, that's separate color right at the end.
Yeah, right there.
Is that it?
Yeah.
And that's commercial, I think.
The one on the right on the zoning, you have like that a little bit right before the bridge from the other side.
Call it an official there and then the park is open space.
Open space, okay.
Just saying, okay.
Sing yours.
All right, so as I mentioned, it's basically what we're doing is we're granting permission to the city for the conditional use and the city would control the use going forward. So it wouldn't be specifically for this applicant, the city would be able to enter into an agreement with an applicant that fit under that use. So it's a little, what?
I understand.
And so.
Do you want to do them separately or?
No, we've got some items in here. I did ask for this. So the affidavit is just basically saying that the city is on board and wants us to do the land use application. And then the other one is the memo from Mr. Holton regarding the direction that they would go as far as how they would do it. I would just say, and these are probably already things that we've thought about, but just basically that the conditional use is granted to the property owner and the property owner is able to activate that use how they see fit.
That is correct, Chair.
Okay. And then the other one would be that all, they would, the Pine Hill would have to, Pine Berry, I'm sorry, I keep calling you Pine Hill. I don't know why I do that. Just slap me. Pine Berry School would need to enter into an agreement with the city.
That's also true.
Yeah. And provide the city with any documentation that it needed, i.e. business license, proper liability and casualty insurance for their use of the property. And then the use of the property would be negotiated between the city and Pine Berry. And then that would be council. We would want council to approve that, probably?
I don't know for sure. I don't think it needs to go to council. But I think your, your blessing allows the Public Works Director to enter into that agreement, that conversation with the folks from Pine Berry. It's not something that warrants going as a conditionally used, does not warrant. Because we're just asking the question, does the use in theory make sense? I, I, let me, let me rephrase that. If the Public Works Director thinks it needs to go, I can make a note to see what his comments will be, but you know, I know that they enter in many types of, similar types of agreements that, that are in support or respect the city's interest, and this is no different. So my sense is that it wouldn't be going to council.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's good to know. So I guess the only thing I would say is if possible, we could add in basically a condition of what the expectation is, that first, that the, the use is granted to the city as the property owner and that Pine Berry School would need to execute all agreements for use of the property through Travis Holton or his designee. Would that be all right?
Yeah. Think it lays it out a little bit more clear.
Okay, and then all proper insurance and things of that nature. And we're looking at 25 students. Right, so we'd be approving this for 25 students?
Well, I do have my concerns, but.
With 25?
No, not with 25.
With more than 25?
No, 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 no. My concerns aren't with the number of kids, our kids being in the park. I mean, that's what the park is for, right? My only concern is running a school out of the park, does that take away from the park's, park's main function? And city staff would be making that decision. But I'm a little concerned about, you know, it's, it's kind of like Sugar Pine has become much larger than what was intended and based on city staff decisions. And so if anybody can weigh in on this as to what their thoughts are, are we, are we going to be preventing the park being used as the public had expected to be able to use it? In such case, if you have a long-term rental, nobody else can rent it during that time, no other groups.
Correct. And so, and this is just me thinking out loud. I would, I would think that in this agreement, you would have to have that covered. So that if there was a event and the space was needed for a city activity, then Pine Berry would be moved to another room in the facility or another area or something like that to accommodate it.
Any other thoughts?
You don't like that idea? Not really, okay.
Yeah, it's just. I, I worry about the details and we're not dealing with the details here. We're either permitting or not permitting.
Right.
And staff will do whatever staff will do.
But we're granting the use based on what we see in front of us.
Right.
So it's not just granting a, a random conditional use, it's granting a use, the conditional use based on this. Could there be a similar conditional use that would fit under this umbrella later?
Sure.
But this is the one that we're looking at, so you're right. So you're, you're thinking of tightening that up a little bit more? Do you want this to go to council? Is that where you're, I'm trying to figure out.
I would feel a lot better if it went to council.
Not sure how to, I mean, I guess that's what you'd like to do, Commissioner. I mean, I think that's, I think that's not sure how to provide guidance on this. I mean, again, we're here, stat, the applicant's here for the conditional use on, on, on continuing. The applicant has been using the site four hours a day during the school year and off peak hours.
Right.
And they're asking to continue that and have some access to the building at non-peak hours. I.
Well, I would, I would feel better if there was at least council oversight on the agreement that is made, right? That there's another set of public eyes that are looking at the details to see if it's going to be a concern for the public or not. So.
Just making sure that we have that covered, is that what you're?
Right, right. See, I'm not against, I'm not against the school being in it, but it's the details that matter and you should have some elected officials working out the details instead of staff alone. So if staff came up with a proposal for a contract for the school and put it before council for a yes or no, then at least it's had public oversight on what I consider very important details.
I would, I would say in regards to this specifically, I mean, I, I feel like that's kind of what we're here for, is to kind of vet it for them on their behalf. And we're not getting into the details just yet. I see where you're coming from, wanting to make sure that everything is, like, all the Ts are crossed and they're considering those small things and we have an elected official in there. I understand technically, you know, we're all elected here on behalf of the community to put something forward and like David was mentioning, the fact that the kids are already there using it constantly through the school year for, granted, I think, half the time and will be using the building conditionally. It makes sense that we would basically give the city the ability to use the building in that regard and trust staff to put something together. In regards to the council oversight for that plan with, with, with the school, I mean, I, I see your point. I, I don't know exactly how you guys would feel about having that additional step, but I feel like overall, I mean, the city staff has the city's best interest in mind when it comes to use of city land and parks.
I, I remember how much public concern there was over Sugar Pine and how much public concern there was over Arthur Academy, that those issues did hit council and were significant. So for us to approve it and for our staff to make a decision without any public oversight on the details, I find that very concerning.
I have a question for staff. When the, the agreement is written up, does the city attorney go through it as well? Does the city attorney look at it?
Again, just in talking to Travis, there's a, I don't want to say thousands, there's a lot of these agreements between city and property. So the city, the city attorney, I guess, does not look at all. However, we could vet it with the city attorney. I mean, I, that might, might be again, it's, I'm, you know, I will put in the conditions, whatever all of you see fit. Vetting it with the, with the city attorney might be a way to cover some of the concerns. But again, leave it up to all of you.
Well, and again, we're here, this is, we're here to make ju, make the final decision on that. And I know from prior experience that the park gets used all the time. Non-peak, non-peak time during school day, most of the time, it's on weekends during the, during the school year. So the peak hours for that is on the school year. And from my experience, I've not, and I don't know, that most of the time, they don't use the Sam Cox building and usually during the day, it's usually in the afternoon or evening hours because most people work.
I mean, we have Tim Siri, I wonder if we could have, I don't know if it's useful, Chair, to ask Tim who.
It would be beneficial in the sense of Tim Siri would know what the uses are, like during spring break, during the summer, parks programs that occur at Glanauto. He would know that information and be able to fill in some of the details.
That I could, Commissioner Allen. I have never seen any concern for having their group down in our park because it facilitates community and the development of our children. They've come to school every day in the pouring down rain, watching for safety in the trees, and all they're asking for is just a small availability of time to be in the building to have lunch, take naps, and the time block that they have is, will not be anywhere detrimental to the use of the park. It would actually be a benefit to the park because it will bring in low-income children, children that are disadvantaged, children that need the help. And there's so many benefits to having this. And I respect your point about oversight and the application, prepare the, you know, the process and the agreement and have it reviewed either by your committee or by the council, probably a simple consent agenda, but I don't, I don't see any impact.
Thank you, Mr. Siri.
I would be satisfied if it was on the consent agenda. For council.
For council? Okay.
The, the actual details.
Commissioner Wilcox, anything?
No, nothing.
And we've just had some of these go south. Okay, I get it. It's always good to have more eyes on it than not. Speak no further than. All right, so. Could you get those first couple that I spit out?
Yeah, what I have is that there's a condition of approval that talks about that the, that the use is granted to the city and that Pine Berry will need to meet the criteria of the Public Works Director or his, or his designee to focus on things like insurance, days and times and things of that nature. And I think I'm also adding that, that the con, that this gets vetted with city council, providing it some degree of oversight, if you will, and that's done by putting it on the consent agenda item, putting it on as a consent agenda item. Got it all?
Yeah, so.
And there's probably more to the criteria that Travis and his folks have worked on. I just listed the ones you mentioned and there's ones, you know, here in his, in his email.
Okay, so they're going to negotiate this, the use is clearly to the city of Troutdale.
That's right.
And Pine Berry School would negotiate with Travis Holton or his designee a building use agreement for use of the city's facility. And then the next one, I would say, would be there to provide all necessary documentation, city license, insurance for use of the building. And we would be approving this for 25 students.
With, with their rental agreement being passed before council for approval.
We have, we're 25 students and then the final rental agreement would be approved by city council. Which actually they should be doing anyhow, I think.
They don't always.
Okay. Does that work?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Did you get all that?
No.
You did?
Yes, it was there.
What'd you say?
So how do you want to vote on this? You want to do it what?
So what we want to do is do conditions.
So with, with the.
With the additions. On my three through seven? Do I have that right? Is there seven? Is there seven?
Total?
Yeah, there was two, and then didn't we add four?
Oh, you're talking about the conditions of approval?
Yeah.
Oh, I added this one big one, so we can break that up. Because the way it's, so fair enough, Chair, so it says, city of Troutdale Planning Division, we have two. And what we would add to that is that the use is granted to, that the use is granted to the city of Troutdale, that would be three. Number four would be that Pineberry will need to meet the criteria of the Public Works Director, that'll be four. And underneath that, I would have insurance, approval for a max of 25 students, the days and times, and the need for Pineberry to show necessary documentation. So those will be subbullets to number four of meeting the criteria. Did I miss any?
No.
And then, I'm not even sure it goes on as a condition of approval or not, but we will take this back and put this on the consent agenda item with these now, you know, new and improved conditions, if you will.
Do you want something in there that council has final approval?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess five would be that the...
Council has final approval.
Yeah. The final documents approved by Troutdale City Council. How's that? Okay?
Yes.
All right. That work?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Priggett.
I move that we accept the conditions of approval as written and amended.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve conditions of approval one through five. And that is for case file LU-0007-2023, Pineberry School. Any discussion on the motion?
This is Commissioner Wilcox.
Wilcox.
I seem to have read in the application that applicant is under some time pressure, and the council won't be meeting again until the end of May. So I just wanted to point that out.
Can we give him temporary use until that council...
We can't, but Public Works can.
Okay.
Okay. And that happens at times here and there, so not too worried about it. Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Wilcox. I think they can, staff can kind of work their way through that if they need to. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Okay, Ms. Washington.
Accept additions, motion is accept additions for approval, one through five.
Yes.
Vote is... Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Commissioner...
Yes.
Commissioner Mimi?
Mimi?
Mimi's here.
No.
And Commissioner Zach?
Yes.
Okay, that passes now, the grand finale.
Final order?
Finding a fact and final order.
I move that we accept the findings of fact and final order. Written?
Yes.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second for case file LU-0007-2023, Pineberry School, to accept finding a fact and final order as written. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, call the rule, please.
Commissioner, or Vice Chair Priggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Zach?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pass.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in and your patience, and best of luck.
Thank you. If you want to see one of those videos, you can just check our Facebook, Pineberry School.
Okay.
It's for you. It is cute, it's kids in white suits flashing in public.
It's got to be cold out there sometimes in the winter.
It is, yeah. We have a whole guide we give families for how they have to dress their kids, because they have to be dressed appropriately when you say, "You're out on the day the snow dumped." Yeah, we actually had to come early release because it got too snowy.
Wow.
The kids loved it.
Yeah, it'd be good.
I was impressed how fast you guys came out, though. Like, the plow truck came, I've never seen that happen so fast.
That's good, all right.
And thank you all so much.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to do this with the kids, yeah.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Staff comments?
It's you.
Really not much to share, except I think on the May 24th, we don't have a meeting until then, we will be coming back to... Staff brought your comments from, and the comments that we heard from the public, from the Parks Master Plan to the Parks Advisory Committee, and that was pretty smooth sailing. So those comments are in the process of being inserted into the document, and we will come back on May 24th to share that with you. Hopefully get your approval, so we can take that to Planning Commission, I believe, on June 13th and June 27th. So that's that. The other piece is, I think Chair Stephenson wanted to chat a little bit about the other part of that meeting, which I think we're going to use for, to begin the discussion, if I have it right, about some code cleanup issues.
Yes.
So that's what I have this evening, Chair.
There's a number of them, and just to give you a heads up, we've got the light industrial, general industrial, and commercial regarding marijuana, and also the council has asked us to write some language regarding psilocybin.
Light industrial, I'm sorry, just to make sure I have...
Light industrial, general industrial, and commercial. Those, cleaning up those tables that work, because there was some stuff that went to council, and council gave it the thumbs down, so it comes back to us, and we clean that up, and then send it back to them.
And psilocybin's new code?
Pardon me?
Psilocybin is, that's new code, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
So those will be the big ones, and then there's a few other ones that we'll be taking on, and so that will be at the 24th.
Yeah.
Right, we'll be doing all of that. Can we need notice requirements to do it on the 24th?
24th of May.
Right.
Sure.
No, with LCDs?
I think so.
DLCD?
We will check tomorrow.
Okay. We can, that'd be great to get that work done. And I'll get cracking on this, okay, so I've got something for you to look at.
Forgive my ignorance, what do those, what does that stand for?
Psilocybin?
No, no, the...
Department of Land...
Conservation.
Conservation.
Okay.
Division.
Yeah.
So we're...
So the state, basically, anytime we do something to the magic codebook, they have to approve it.
Got it.
Anything, and so they have to be given notice, they have to be given a chance to chime in on it. It's just all kind of part of the process.
Thank you.
They're not bad people, but they're...
They just want to be in there.
Brought into the loo.
In the game.
That's all I got, Chair.
All right. So it'll be a big hopping night on the 24th. We'll get as much done, I'll have as much done as I possibly can to you guys, so you can at least look at it, and then critique it, okay?
Thank you, Chair Stephenson.
You're welcome. All right, time for you. Let's move, okay. Nope, all right. Okay, let's go around the room. Want to start?
I got nothing.
You got nothing, okay, all right, fine, nothing. Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes, I have some follow-up on what David was addressing, actually. I spent nearly three hours this afternoon listening to the last Parks Advisory Committee meeting from the 18th, where they were presented with the Planning Commission recommendations. They pretty much accepted most of them as is, they made a few minor tweaks here and there. They also made some other minor changes here and there, in other areas. The one major change that I noticed was they removed entirely the table entry for Parks Maintenance Utility Fee. So that was a big one.
And they took that out?
Yeah, they took that out entirely, that was, that was one I had a problem with, too. That was their major, major change.
We recommended that came out, too, if you remember.
Yeah, they went through that page by page, one page after another, in very minute detail, so they really, they really went at it thoroughly. So that's all I had on that, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, you said it went through without any...
Oh, I mean, right.
Went smoothly, you said. He said it went smoothly, he didn't say anything wrong.
Yeah, it's a little washboard effect, but it eventually got smooth.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes, Commissioner Wilcox?
Look, I did what I had, the audio quality on the Parks meeting was excellent. Most of the time it's not, but it was, it was just perfect.
That's great, that's probably why they had a longer meeting, was they knew they had better audio going. Aren't you on Parks?
I am, yeah, it's true, all of it, everything you said.
All right, Sanders?
Uh, no further comments.
I have nothing.
Okay, and Commissioner Wilcox, you're done?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so a couple of things. Committee appointments, the applications all got turned in, and there's a real bumper crop of people, which is great. A lot of people to work from, and so this group will be adding... There's a couple of retreads, and then there's... Besides the retreads, there's the alternate position, and Commissioner Wydilla's position are the two that'll be filled. So one regular and one alternate will be filled through this process. But I think it's great that we have a lot of applicants, we have a lot of positions, and it's great to get people involved. It's kind of exciting. All right, and the only other thing that I had was a reminder that Marv Wydilla's celebration is at 5 o'clock on Saturday at George Wince's. All right, and with that, I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening, and take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you all very much. See you on May 24th.
This is the first time I have been called a retread.
I thought it was appropriate.
It was.